I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic in its stand. I am not a citizen of the United States of America.
Mr. Chair, we can stop the agenda with two additions. Discussion on the sewer extension and discussion on the board of finance motion for last night.
I will second that.
The discussion, where would you like to put that?
Oh, under nine D A.
Should fire have been a few things that matter?
Um, I don't know if it's a separate topic, either work, one do it AP.
It doesn't matter to me, I just.
We can do it AP if you want.
I've heard the type of business that it is, it should probably mean.
Two items, Ted again with Firehouse.
And discussion of sewer expansion. Now, we haven't really discussed, we only have a presentation on, so that would be.
Yeah.
Any discussion on the matter? Not those. Yeah, those in favor of the. Additions to the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Now as to adoption of the agendas of all. So.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, those in favor of accepting the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Agenda item three, appropriate minutes, regular meeting of July twenty second, two thousand twenty five. I would approve those minutes. Motion made in second, is there any discussion, are there any errors, admissions or adjustments to the minutes as presented? If not, those in favors adopting the appropriate minutes from the July twenty second meeting, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Moving on to agenda four, public remarks. There may be some folks here that haven't been through this process, have been to our town meetings, council meetings in the past. So I just wanted to point out a couple of things. We, uh, we abide by the rules that are the bylaws of town council. This is a meeting of the town council. You have public remarks or comments to make. I, I will point you out to give you the privilege to go to the dais to my left and make your comments. Comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Please try to stay as absolutely close to that as possible. I know with a lot of potential people speaking tonight, I don't want it to, to get on too unruly and go too long. I want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to speak. And we speak with civility to one another. We don't impugn the integrity or question the motives of anyone else who is speaking. Make your points and we will listen. It's not a debate with the council tonight. It's for the council to get input from you and to consider that either later in the meeting or in the future. Does anyone have any questions? If not, is there anyone who would like to make public remarks at this time? Oh, Lord of the dais, please give your name and address.
Good evening. Todd Krasnicki, thirty Abbey Road. I'm here to comment on the proposed sewer expansion project presented to the town council on June tenth by the town manager and public utilities administrator. Quote, does the town council review and or vote on this proposal? End quote. We posed this question to the town manager and the response given dated June thirtieth in C C to the public utilities administrator and town council was as follows. Quote, the town has assigned, has assigned oversight of the sewer system to the water pollution control authority. So a certain authority to operate the system. However, the town council may review and comment on their activities. End quote. The first sentence is accurate, accurately conveys that chapters one forty six, two sixty one and two sixty four of the town charter give the water pollution control authority certain authority to operate the system. However, the second sentence obfuscates truth. Connecticut general statutes, chapters, uh, chapter one oh three, section seven dash two four six clearly states, quote, water pollution control authority of a town within which there is a city or borough shall not exercise any power within such city or borough without the express consent of such city or borough. End quote. There's quite a difference between the town manager's response stating the town council's ability to review and comment on the water pollution control authority versus the general council, uh, general Connecticut statute stating that the water pollution control needs the towns express consent. I highlight this tonight due to the repeated efforts of the town manager and the public utilities administrator to obscure the details and efforts of the sewer expansion project, not just to the residents, but to you, the town council. My three minutes don't allow me to list all the discrepancies, but I want to share just one more example. In the June, in the, in the June fifth memo from the public utilities administrator submitted for the June tenth town council meeting and as presented by the public utilities administrator at the June tenth meeting. It is stated that the capital cost for the project is approximately fifteen million dollars divided by supposedly three hundred and twelve properties at a rate of a hundred and seventy dollars a month. But does not mention the additional costs to residents of hooking up to the sewer line, hiring a contractor to run a line to your house, hiring a contractor to offline septic system or paying the yearly fee to the water pollution control authority. A cost of a hundred and seventy dollars a month is very misleading. I implore you to take a close look at the June fifth memo from the public utilities administrator submitted for the June ten town council meeting and watch the June ten town council meeting and note how it lacks substantial data, is full of anecdotal evidence and realize the tremendous burden that will be placed on residents affected. My true hope is that you do not give consent for this project. However, at the very least, please halt this project and take a more careful look into this matter. And for the record, I am against the sewer expansion project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments. Is there anyone else who would care?
I'm Jamie Krasnicki. I also live at thirty Abbey Road, and I would like to use my time this evening to point out a few serious points of discrepancy with the public utilities administrators' June fifth memo submitted for the June ten town council meeting. First, I was unable to identify anywhere close to three hundred and twelve properties on the nine streets listed in the memo. Using the online G I S database in conjunction with the two maps included in the memo as a guide, I reached a total of a hundred and ninety five parcels, which is a hundred and seventeen short of three hundred and twelve. Are there other roads involved that haven't been included in the nine listed in the memo? We don't know. Second, the public utilities administrator uses the term, quote, many related to the number of homes constructed prior to nineteen seventy. Using the same online G I S database, the percentage of homes on the nine roads built before nineteen seventy is thirty five percent. I wouldn't define that as many. One important consideration is that even if homes were constructed before nineteen seventy, it doesn't mean that their properties still have the original septic system. In fact, we have neighbors that nineteen sixty three house had a new septic system installed in twenty nineteen. The memo goes as far as to say, quote, many of the properties in the proposed sewer extension area are assumed to be built in the nineteen seventies and do not meet current septic system standards. End quote. I requested septic system information from Chadon Health District from January twenty twenty three to current, which was July eighteenth of twenty twenty five for Abbey Road, North Cone, Tiffany Court, Seraphin Terrace, Child's Road and Clark Hill. During the time period, C H D reported one septic system failure and three repairs. A third point is the forty thousand dollar septic system replacement cost mentioned in the memo. In an email reply to me dated July third, the public utilities administrator stated, quote, if I remember correctly, they were quoted north of forty thousand for their septic replacement. End quote. This was in reference to my inquiry about sixty five to sixty seven Clark Hill roads request to hook up to the sewer line. It is important to note that this property is a duplex. It's a two family property and the sizing for a septic system for a two family property is quite different than most of our homes. Finally, in the presentation to the town council at the June tenth meetings, the public utilities administrator commented that sewers were not installed in the area in the nineteen eighties as the town didn't, quote, have the appetite for it. Based on in-person conversations with my neighbors, texts and social media communication, it is clear to me that right now in twenty twenty five, the residents that I have spoken with do not have an appetite for the sewer expansion. I thank you for your time tonight and I am adamantly opposed to the sewer extension proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Steve Jones. I live at three Jacobson Farm Road. And I'm here to also represent the hundreds of homeowners that may be assessed an unprecedented roughly forty thousand dollar lien on their homes for the sewer expansion project. Here to ask for your help. So I think you'll see there's quite a few who are opposed to this. Um, and we're not quite sure where to turn. We're asking for your help. Some key questions that I think we should all want answered. First, what is the real reason for this massive assessment? Is this solely about the W P C A needing to expand their revenue? Are we being forced to subsidize? Is this actually about environmental need? If so, where are these studies that support that? Is this about serving outside interests to allow for the expansion of development that require sewers? Second, I would ask you all to seek this transparency. Do you understand that these assessments may violate Connecticut law? Connecticut general statute seven dash two four nine requires assessments to be proportional to the benefits received. For example, residents on Child Road are being charged forty thousand dollars for dry sewer that won't work for five to ten years and may be dependent on other massive capital projects and road improvements. A flat forty thousand dollar fee, regardless of property size, value or septic condition violates equal protection. Third, why are the real costs being hidden or described as fluid? Old vine residents were told similar numbers, then surprised by hundreds, thousands of annual user fees and maintenance costs and connection fees. What additional cost will be added after the forty thousand? And as has already been pointed out, that forty thousand seems to be under calculated, although we cannot validate the numerator or denominator. I'm calling for council action. Demandful transparency. Require the W P C A to produce all environmental studies, complete cost analysis and legal justification before proceeding. Protect your constituents. There are elderly homeowners on fixed incomes and working families being hit with assessments larger than many people's annual salaries. Ensure legal compliance. Investigate the real motives and ensure that the impacted homeowners understand the full cost. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Teresa Rovillo, seventy six Abbey Road. And I am opposed to the, um, W P C A Stewart expansion plan for multiple reasons. First, the numbers don't add up. Mister De Simone has estimated the cost at fifteen point two million to be divided by three hundred and twelve dwellings, which by his math amounts to the debt, a debt of forty thousand dollars each. If the math is done correctly, the actual cost is much closer to fifty thousand. When Mister De Simone presented his idea to the council at the June tenth meeting, Councilwoman Wannett asked if this would result in a forty thousand dollar lien on homeowners' property. Mister De Simone answered, quote, no, it will most likely be an annual payment to the town as the bondholder or W P C A until the loan is paid. Unquote. This confuses me whether in one lump sum or in installments, if the homeowner, homeowner is obligated to make payments to the town or W P C A to pay off a loan, doesn't that constitute a lien on their property? Furthermore, town manager David Cox commented as being in favor of sewers because then potentially, quote, decent sized parcels of land, unquote, can be subdivided. And this in turn, quote, improves the economics of the water and treatment plant if you have more users. Unquote. Shouldn't he be concerned with the forty thousand dollar debt that the W P C A is trying to saddle homeowners with? Not with improving the W P C A's economics? Another worry is the environmental impact of the sewers. Because water will no longer be naturally returning to the aquifers, water tables will drop. During the June meeting, Ms. Wannett pointed out, apparently not for the first time, that several wells in town went dry after sewers were put in and inquired who would be responsible for paying to rectify the problems. Mister De Simone poo-pooed her, stating that even though Ms. Wannett had, quote, anecdotal evidence, unquote, he and the colony can never experience something like this in their careers and blamed East Hampton's, quote, crappy wells, unquote, for the problem. Ms. Wannett stated that, quote, so the homeowners will have to sue the W P C A if their wells go dry. Unquote. Mister De Simone's refined, quote, we can just agree to disagree. Unquote. Uh, another environmental concern is the site on Abbey Road where the proposed pump station will be located for which Mister De Simone's acquaintance at number sixty three Abbey Road has offered up a portion of his sixteen acre property. This area located across the street from Seraphin Terrace next to Pine Brook is wetlands and a flood zone. Every heavy rainstorm when crossing the bridge, cars pass through several inches of water. Why put any structure there? You, the council members, have the power to stop this plan. The good people of East Hampton are asking for more open space, not more developments in smaller lap sizes, which is what the W P C A wants so they can bring more revenue for their coffers. Furthermore, we don't have forty thousand dollars each to pay for sewers we don't need.
Thank you, Jamie.
Please take the, make the right decision and shut this down as soon as possible. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care? A public comment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm absolutely appalled. I'm sorry. I'm Lindsay Jean Figo. I reside on North Cone Road where I've been living for the last twenty two years. Been an East Hampton resident since nineteen eighty five. Um, this is about the sewer expansion. I am obviously opposed. I'm absolutely appalled that this fifteen point two million dollar sewer expansion proposal has even made it this far. This plan forces only the affected homeowners to pay a minimum of forty thousand each. And that's for for the thousands more it would cost to connect. Some older homes could have plumbing that's not compatible, that may need to be completely replaced. That cost would also be on the homeowner. Cost of decommissioning the old septic system after hooking up to the sewer, also a cost on the homeowner. There's also connection fees moving forward and the actual construction to connect to the sewer. In just two days of research, I found that the W P C A's numbers are extremely misleading. Rounding up or down in their favor, for example, Mister De Simone quoted a fifteen point two million dollar project costing each homeowner about forty thousand dollars. Correct me if I'm wrong, but my math comes much closer to fifty thousand per home. He also claimed septic replacement costs cost forty to fifty thousand. Yet after speaking with many reputable companies in our area, they've all told me that a replacement should never exceed thirty thousand dollars and that is an extreme case. Most on average would be between twenty and twenty five thousand. The W P C A admits the sewer project cost is fluid, meaning it could spike after approval, leaving us with a blank check we can't afford. Meanwhile, this, the septic systems in our area routinely last thirty to fifty years with proper maintenance. Some originals are still working after decades. This isn't about need, it's about burden. You're asking retirees on fixed incomes, young families barely making ends meet and people like me already recovering from major unexpected expenses to take on debt that could sink them. If this council allows this to go forward, it will be a betrayal of the people that you represent. You should be ashamed to even consider putting this on, on our backs. And I can tell you now, I will have zero respect for any council member who votes to keep this alive. Do the right thing, kill this proposal now. Thank you.
Thank you. Although I don't comment on remarks that are said, this council is not insensitive to this concerns of our citizens regarding this sewer project. And this is going to be a long way to go for this, is that, that I think all of us are probably of like mind that this is nothing that we're, that we're going to take lightly.
We're going to discuss it further.
We have a lot more discussion, other things to deal with.
Hi, Matthew Puzzo. I live at two two six West High Street. Um, I saw something today about how the police department is going to be talking with, uh, middlesex police. I guess we're six officers short. I just wanted to describe my thoughts on, it's kind of like a, a very integrated thought process. Um, the developers in Connecticut, they really want to build the exact number of houses of how many illegal immigrants we have in here. You can call me racist all you want, except one thing that we are from here and these people have to abide by the rules that are from here or else I don't want them. I don't think that they should be here. And I think a lot of cops are thinking the exact same thing. They do not have the rights to arrest someone who is, has no documentation, is from, say, El Salvador, which used to be the murder capital of the world, literally five years ago. And all of a sudden it's not. Where did all those people go? Well, America. I, I think that this needs to be addressed, starting on a community level. And we need to get actual officers of the law who uphold the law on that level. Because it sounds like Connecticut and the developers, developers want to build as many houses as illegal immigrants. If there's a hundred thousand, they want it to build a hundred thousand. Now that we're down to forty thousand supposedly, well, now they want to build another hundred and fifty thousand because there's supposed to be two hundred thousand illegal immigrants in Connecticut now. I think this is absolutely absurd. These developers, I think, don't really care about us at all. And they just want to sit there and take the land and use whatever excuse they can to shovel our tax dollars into building these houses and to destroy all the forests that we have and that we are supposed to be here to protect. We are to protect them. And I think, I, I'm not entirely sure what's going to happen with this. There wasn't an explanation, but I think that the officers in this town and in other towns need to be unleashed and be able to report illegals and to do their job. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who care? Make public comments. Sure.
I'm Mike Rovillo, I'm at seventy six Abbey Road. And, uh, I spoke at the last town council meeting. I just wanted to follow up, uh, and thank you for your time. Also, I want to extend my thanks for adding it to the agenda, uh, tonight. I think it's very important that this gets, uh, reviewed by the council in, you know, in, in as soon as possible. Um, again, I'm reiterating my appeal to say, hey, we need to stop this, right? And I have approached it from the technical project, uh, point of view. I provided many questions to the town manager, the town council, and to Mister De Simone. Uh, none of them have been answered so far. In addition, Ted, I spoke with Mister De Simone on, uh, last Friday and he reiterated to me that most of those questions, or many of those questions cannot be answered, right? He does not have answers to many of those questions. Uh, and that was all referring to items that are missing from the original project plan, right? That was presented on June fifth. In addition, I just want to point out on June fifth, this is the, uh, basically the project sheet. You might see this page six oh six. One of the things that's missing on here is public comment or asking people up at step one, what should be done. On this document here, there's a vague reference to developers agreement and some sort of public hearing. And that's, uh, like step number eight. Okay, that really should be first. Okay, rather, we should not be here after the fact talking about this. Um, you've heard a lot of the specifics, a lot of the specifics are my correspondence asking for, uh, you know, responses to that. But, you know, in addition to that, you know, a couple of other things came up. I spoke with Mister Walsh at D P W. The paving costs are nowhere's near, they're an order of magnitude less than what are quoted in Mister Simone's, uh, uh, proposal that Mister Cox and Mister Simone presented. I, I don't know why we're referring to this massive savings in there. But, uh, you know, he was talking about maybe three hundred thousand dollars to pave Abbey Road. Okay, he had, the interesting thing was D P W, when I talked to them, he has data right in front of him. I'm on the phone, he said, oh, let me look at my spreadsheet, I'll give that to you right away. That should be an example for the town. Couple other notes, W P C A does not do, uh, Zoom meetings for their, uh, meetings. They are recorded, uh, and, uh, the recordings are just verbal recordings. And as Mister De Simone noted, I can go down there and listen to them if I want to. I think we really should have a policy in town that all these meetings be recorded and posted for, for people to see. Uh, at the last W P C A meeting, there was also a discussion or a proposal to extend the Hog Hill line, uh, and what ended up being a lower cost than this proposal. Uh, interestingly enough, that was talked about by Mister De Simone to be funded by up to about a million dollars of money that the W P C A currently has. Uh, I was a little surprised by this, but thankfully, the W P C A board shut that discussion down and said, no, we, we, we can't consider that now. Considering what we're doing to these other people or trying, or, or what, you know, these other folks are up against. So, um, you know, as we go through this, you know, the one comment I really need to make that's really important here is, you know, we keep referring to these fifty year old plans, uh, from the last century. The tax base has changed dramatically for the worst in those fifty years. And because of that, um, you know, I think we've got to stop referring to fifty year old plans and let's build new plans going forward. Thank you. Well, that's my three minute one.
All right, what else who we could come, Mr. Johnson?
Leonard Johnson, twenty one Long Crossing Road. On the agenda for the planning and zoning meeting of August sixth to twenty to twenty five, item A four was a discussion regarding thirty long crossing road in terms of interpretation slash approval of construction activities. My wife and I live directly across the street from the proposed construction activities. After almost an hour of deliberation that seemed to, to be going nowhere, our neighbors took it up to be recognized up by the chairman. I stood, stood it up and my wife replaced her and to, to, to speak. The chairman ignored us. Yet the developer and the developers and attorney were allowed to speak as much as they wanted. We, we were denied a right to speak during, during the discussion portion of that meeting. But please address this with the planning and zoning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Leonard Johnson, twenty one Long Crossing Road. A few months ago, our town planner, Juliette Hodge, asked the Planning and Zoning Commission for permission to rewrite the regulations for P and Z. Many of the existing regs were outdated and vague and unenforceable. After a very lengthy discussion, they finally agreed to let her rewrite the regs. During the P and Z meeting last During the PMZ meeting last week, the planner kept asking for clarification regarding the processing materials on a construction site. She kept saying that she needed the answer that night to three questions that she had given them. There was a lot of discussion, but vague resolutions. My husband and I feel that the Planning and Zoning Commission is stonewalling her and a lot and not allowing our paid. Professional planner to do her job. That needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
People on Zoom level, because there's cameras being raised on Zoom.
Yeah, we'll get to them last.
I'm Sally Patrick Parker, and I live at thirty Main Street. I was a marketing research project manager for more than twenty-five years, and I designed and executed research plans for companies and corporations like Cigna. CSR Incorporated and Comcast. My comments tonight are generated by the Senior Center and Services Task Force Survey questionnaire that was submitted to council for approval. But what I'm going to say really applies to all of the research that may be planned by East Hampton entities. Research is only as valuable as the accuracy and reliability of the information that it collects. Valid results do not just happen, they need expert planning and expert design. The right questions need to be asked in a right way. The questions need to be asked of the right people. And the answers are date or data need to be collected accurately and analyzed objectively. There's a special process and there are industry best practices that make good research happen. And there's a cost associated with it. So what I frequently hear is, oh, we're not a corporation. It's too expensive, we just want to ask people some questions, we don't need all of that. From my experience and my perspective, I can promise you that indeed you do need all of that to produce and field. A survey that is going to give you information or data that is actually usable and that isn't going to bite you down the road. The Senior Center Services and Services Task Force is focusing on issues that are significant to the growth and satisfaction of our community. They need and East Hampton deserves to have them get the best possible data. We want them to move forward with their ideas and their growth plans, and the data, reliable data is necessary. I shared with you the council earlier. That the current questionnaire, though drafted with the best of intentions, it will result. Undeniably in unrealistic and unreliable data. That means that any decisions that you might make regarding a new senior center or community center will be possibly. Misinformed that the millions we might invest. In a new center may not have the anticipated return on investment, either financially or satisfactorily. There could be expensive rework that happens because the data that we obtained and and based our decisions on was not valid. Town resources could be misdirected, some of the programs and services that look like. They're important could totally miss the mark and other needs might be totally overlooked. Equally important, public trust will erode and reputations of East Hampton suffer. I strongly suggest that the council ask the task force to develop formal research objectives, a sampling plan, an analysis plan, and rebuild their questionnaire from there. And that the questionnaire be tested before it's finalized. These activities, I know, will help assume a successful survey. I also hope that going forward, council will consider requiring that proposed research work within the process and comply with best practices.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else with care to make public remarks? I am.
Good evening, my name is Amy Sino, and I live at thirty Child Road. So this is clearly not my wheelhouse, and I'm so fortunate to have these neighbors. I'm not going to talk about things I don't know, I'm just going to talk tonight about something I do know. Three summers ago, I paid fourteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars in cash to install an entirely new septic system. Not because I had to, we were putting in a pool and I had to move mine. A friend of mine used the same company in the past year and paid twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty. Both are well documented with receipts in hand tonight if anybody wants to see them. These actual costs stand stark contrasted, forty thousand plus estimate being presented for the proposed sewer expansion. And that doesn't even include the hookup, I could have three septics for that cost. And my septic is said to last at least fifty years. Why should families like mine be forced to pay more than double what many of us need and use? This project would be a place would place a substantial financial burden on residents. It's especially unfair when our existing septic systems are working well and were recently upgraded. Forcing us into an expensive sewer connection system. Particularly when I receive on Child Road, we're supposed to get a dry sewer. And that won't be functioning for another five to ten years, if it even becomes functional. How is it fair that I need to spend money on something I don't even need and will never use? The situation feels like economic and functional robbery. Why should my household, already up to code and functioning, shoulder this cost for something that provides no benefit? Town Council, please hear me tonight, I do not support the sewer expansion as currently proposed. There are a lot of shady parts to this plan, and I have many questions for tomorrow night's meeting. East Hampton residents, please do your homework and demand real localized numbers for new septic systems. Not inflated estimates from the people who are trying to run this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Kim Spagulo, I live at twenty-three North Cone Road. I am opposed to the sewer expansion project for many reasons, I'm only going to go through a few of them tonight, keep it short and sweet. First, a forty thousand dollar lien against our property is not acceptable. My property has an extremely long driveway, and it would cost us tens of thousands on top of that to hook up to the system. We purchased our home just three years ago, and I have three very young boys. My husband and I both work very hard to support our family, and these monthly payments would be potentially something we might not be able to afford on a monthly basis. I ask that the town council please fight for us, as there are many people in this room and outside of that room, outside of this room. That are also opposed to the sewer expansion expansion project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Lady. Back.
My name is Laurie Weech, I live at forty-one Cone Road. I am very against sewer expansion. For all the reasons that all the faces that you see here in this room have given you tonight. This is going to be a financial burden on all of us. People that have finally paid off their homes, thought they would be able to enjoy their life, have a little bit less stress, are now going to be hit with forty-plus thousand dollars. That we do not need. Our septic systems are fine. We are all responsible adults, if there's something wrong with your septic system, you have it repaired. Not only because it affects you and your household, but it affects your neighbors. I I don't understand why this would even be a thought. One of my neighbors across the street had an inspector out not too long ago, who she was told that she needed to expand her septic. In order to do what she wanted to do on her property. Why would you tell somebody that? And they go and spend all the money for the septic and then turn around and go, hey. We're gonna put in sewers, and now you're gonna pay forty thousand dollars. I mean, that's ridiculous, ridiculous. I look at all of you, you are the people that we voted for. To protect us, to look out for us. And I'm asking you all to do that, we are depending on you. And you really need to listen, really need to look into everything and get a full picture of what's going on. And look out for us, the people that put you here. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, Mark Hutchinson, three Almonds Crossing Road. I will make this very short and sweet as well, Lori Weech summed it up. Across the street, we had. Storage units, and it was going to be small businesses. Now we're told it's going to be affordable housing. My understanding is that the WPCA is a private entity. And that it needs the town's authorization to move forward. Mr. D Simone is trying to sell you. World of goods. We don't need them, there's a reason why they were passed in the sixties, the eighties, and two thousand and five. The town abandoned it, we need to abandon it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Tim Johnson, at nine Long Crossing Road. In twenty twenty-two, I spent twenty-two thousand dollars on a brand-new engineered system, supposed to last thirty to fifty years. And now you want to hit the people in this town, WPCA wants to give another forty thousand dollars on a system, I will most likely be dead before I have to use. That is absolutely absurd. And if you think the forty thousand isn't a lot, that's a thirty-eight percent increase on my town property tax in effect for twenty years. That I have no say and no control over. My house and my property is fifty-two hundred dollars a year property taxes, add another two thousand to that is thirty-eight percent. In what world is that justified? And in what world should I subsidize an affordable housing project sewer needs? On my back for something I will never have to use in my lifetime, I'm forty-five years old and in a couple of days. System lasts fifty years, I'll be ninety-five before I have to hook up to that septic, but I had to pay forty thousand dollars out of my pocket for that. So a developer can have low affordable housing in the area. So I ask you guys really look into what's going on, why this is being pushed so hard, and who's the one to benefit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tom Sieglen, I'm a live at forty-seven Cone Road. And I, too, in two thousand nineteen, have put a new septic system in at a cost of nineteen thousand two hundred and change. Including interior remodeling, but I'm not here to talk about that. Last night, I went to the Finance Board, and I believe you would you amended the minutes to talk about the resolution that was provided. At that meeting concerning the property at Leven Skinner Road, concerning the firehouse. Someone made, I don't have the exact. Amendment that was passed, but I had to do something with another. Inspection of the property to verify. The inspection that was previously done, and also concerning a underorder round oil tank or fuel tank. With potential harm to the environment and additional cost for remediation to the taxpayer of East Hampton. Which to me, this property is is. I think we ought to abandon this property. That this has got too many what-ifs. And at the end of the day, just like this sewer project, the town is going to end up paying the cost for. Basically. Somebody's not doing their job verifying that this is viable property to put a firehouse on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who care to speak at this time?
So you have two online and one vocal video. What do you want next? Want to go online or the video?
As long as the video doesn't go over three minutes.
So scotch over three minutes. You want to grab your online first and then we'll do that one last?
Alberto?
Hi, how you doing? My name's Roberto Cruz, I live at two seventeen Clark Hill Road. I work every day to pay my bills. Pay my mortgage. Make sure my family is taken care of. And I do my best. I live day by day, I'm one of those people that you hear that live day by day. And I really, really cannot afford something like this. Not to not to mention that my well is only about ten feet from the road. So how would that affect my well? I also have a septic unit and I have it cleaned and it's, it works perfectly fine for me. A lot of people brought up a lot of points that this could have environmental impacts. And. I'm also opposed to new taxes, this feels like a massive tax hike for me. That I cannot afford. I will try my best to afford if I'm forced upon it, but under duress. I am completely opposed of this, and with that, I rest.
Thank you.
iPhone? Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Rebecca Harvey, thirty-nine Flanders Road. I guess I'd like to just start really quick and apologize that I don't have notes in front of me because I'm driving. However, I am one thousand percent opposed to the sewer expansion, even though I am not even close to being affected by it. After talking to many people in town and reading all of the literature that I've seen. Having anybody force a forty thousand dollar lien on a property that we own is ridiculous. And then having to still make that payment if you choose to sell your home. A lot of people, like my family, actually moved to East Hampton because we didn't want to be on public sewer or public water. We enjoy having that, taking care of ourselves and not having more expenses to the town or public utilities in some way. So I am really just here tonight to stand up for the residents that don't want this and let you know that my household and every other resident that I've talked to. If this were to go to a vote of some sort, they're all, they're all gonna vote no for it. My compassion goes out to the people that are staying awake at night, wondering what's gonna happen to them if this gets pushed through. And, you know. For this to go in for affordable housing and bring in more residents when there's on the agenda tonight that we can't even support our town as is. With the current police force and we're going to be subsidizing by working with Middletown, who's going to have a fifteen, twenty. Probably thirty-minute response time is absolutely crazy, just none of this makes sense, there's no logic behind it. And with the tax hike that we just had, the mill rate being one of the most expensive in the town, I'm against the fire department proposal as well. That just seems like a huge money grab by certain individuals. And I think we need to stop talking about how the town wants to spend our money. And figure out how to work with what you have and stop trying to take more from us. So kind of opposed to everything that is going on right now. And honestly, myself and a lot of people are looking into other towns to move to. Because this is just getting too difficult to manage. So I appreciate you all, and I hope that you take every resident into consideration when you're making these really, actually, these are really difficult decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sin?
Okay, hi. Um, so I am actually purchasing uh Thirty-Six Abbey Road. And um, I don't even live there yet, and I know that the residents do not want this. So I'm not sure where the information came, but this is a wanted project. Um, we recently obviously had the inspection because we are moving um to the house. Our sewer is, is fine, our sewage. Um, I'm a housewife. I have two small boys and, you know, it's insane to think that we can afford just another forty K. You know, we're just a single-income family and uh yeah, I just pretty much wanna reiterate what everybody else was saying. This, this project is not wanted. It's not gonna benefit us. It's extremely expensive. Um, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
This, I'll uh play this. This is from the uh vocal video on the town website.
Julie Jones, Three Jacobson Farm Road. Good evening, members of the council. I'm here on behalf of many residents who are deeply concerned and frankly outraged by the proposed sewer expansion plan by the WPCA. Under this plan, every affected homeowner would be burdened with a forty thousand dollar lien on their property, regardless of whether they choose to hook up. The current septic systems associated with the affected properties are in perfect working order. They meet all environmental and health standards, and they do not require replacement or repair. We believe that the WPCA has misled you and has not provided you with all of the evidence necessary to understand this proposed project. If homeowners do agree to hook up, they also face a mandatory seven thousand dollar hookup fee, construction costs associated with the sewer connection to their properties, and ongoing annual costs. The forty thousand dollar assessment is not only excessive, it is by any reasonable standards inflated. We do have receipts and written quotes from licensed insured companies, some of whom have already done similar work in our town that are tens of thousands of dollars less than this figure. It is important to note that Connecticut State Statute Section seven dash two four nine reads, "The sum of initial and subsequent assessments shall not exceed the special benefit accruing to the property." This assessment exceeds any special benefit to these properties, especially in the case of Child's Road, where the plan is to construct a dry sewer that could be operational in five to ten years. There is zero benefit for this neighborhood. Beyond the financial injustice and conflicts with Connecticut State statutes, this raises a serious constitutional concern. The Fifth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution prohibits the taking of private property for public use without just compensation. While the town may not be physically seizing these homes, placing a forced lien of this magnitude, one that diminishes property value, creates debt, and forces payment for infrastructure we neither need nor requested, functions as a financial taking. I would also like to point out that this proposal is especially devastating to our elderly neighbors, many on fixed incomes, some over ninety years old. They have worked their entire lives to pay off their homes so that they could live independently and securely in retirement. Now, through no fault of their own, the WPCA is asking them to shoulder a debt that could force them out of their homes. We understand the importance of responsible infrastructure, but this is not responsible. It is unfair, unnecessary, and financially harmful to the very people you are elected to represent. It also speaks to a larger agenda, one that seems less about public need and more about shifting the cost of a bigger plan onto unwilling residents. We are telling you now, we will not be the fall guys. We will not finance a project we do not need at costs that are not justified through liens we did not agree to. We urge you to reject this expansion as proposed, work with the community, explore alternatives, and ensure that no homeowner is forced into financial hardship due to infrastructure they neither need nor requested. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Cynthia?
Yes, hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Cindy Sorvillo Beloga. I'm located at Four Cone Road. I am not present tonight because I am homebound, physically disabled, and on a fixed income. Um, I have been struggling at this point already with the raising of taxes. And this is gonna be a real financial hardship for me and many in this community. I have given to this community my whole life, owning a business for thirty-five years, working at the senior center for forty-two years, teaching. Um, and I love this community. I don't wanna be forced out of my home. And I'm here with everyone who is worried about the financial hardship. Thank you.
Thank you.
It appears to be a note.
Hi, my name is Cookie Mankowski and I live at Eleven Town Line Drive in East Hampton. Um, and I am on the Commission on Aging and I'm also on the Senior Task Force. And I'm here to talk about the survey and I'd like to defer any questions or comments until we get to nine A. Is that?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Going once, going twice, the closed public remarks section, agenda. Moving on to agenda item five presentations.
You have none this evening.
Agenda item six, bids and contracts.
Also none.
Agenda item seven, resolutions, ordinances, policies, reprofoundations.
So you've sort of split this uh particular item into two parts. I don't know how you wanna handle that, but um the items you have in front of you relate to the potential uh project for eleven Skinner Street uh acquisition and uh conversion into a fire department. Uh, and then the potential resolutions related to the sale of the existing fire departments, if that's something the council wanted to ask the commi- community to consider. However, as I think you'll talk about in just a moment, uh, the Board of Finance has not yet acted on those items and in fact asked the council to undertake some specific actions. So these three items are not really available for you to act upon until the Board of Finance does makes its recommendation.
We need to table one more. Just let them go, find a way some.
Um, if you, uh, that is sort of a loaded question. If you intend to take them up ever, you should probably table them. If you don't intend to take them up ever, then you can probably just um either vote them down or adopt some sort of a motion that says they will no longer be considered. I, I, they should be put to bed somehow, I suppose.
I'd like to see a table until the, talk about the, yeah, what the Board of Finance is looking for. I'd make a motion to table until, as we decide what we're doing.
Motion, motion table in a second. Is there any discussion?
Only, I'd, I'd really like to hear it. I, I didn't hear it exactly.
I just said I wanted to table it until we had time to talk about it, and then if we need to bring it up in another meeting, we can bring it up.
Thank you. Further discussion? Who's in favor of the motion? Tables, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oh, it's nay? Items are seven A, B, and C, or favor? Agenda item, moving on, agenda item eight, continue business. A subcommittee reports and updates. We have any subcommittee reports or updates at this time?
Um, so for the Plan of Conservation Development Steering Committee, all of those neighborhood meetings have been completed. So the next thing, it is listed in the town management report, if you wanna read a little bit more about it there. Um, but the next thing will be more strategized meetings circulating around specific topics that were major concern during those uh neighborhood meetings. So we'll itemize those topics that everybody was, you know, very interested in, and we'll have some more strategy sessions on those. So keep an eye out. We will be posting on the town website and on social media.
Uh, part of this is meeting right now to discuss still um giving this out to the public.
What, what exactly is the meeting?
I have no idea. I'm not at the meeting. I'm not sure what the topic is for tonight.
Okay.
But they are meeting right now. They are Tuesday night meeting.
Is there any other subcommittee reports? Moving on, continue business, uh, new agenda item eight B, firehouse.
Uh, thank you. As I alluded to a moment ago, the uh Board of Finance held its meeting last night to discuss uh the three uh, three resolutions rather uh that were put to it related to the acquisition uh of eleven Skinner and the sale of the two firehouses. Um, during that discussion, uh, the Board of Finance ended to adopt, ended up adopting a motion uh basically, uh, certainly if you want me to, I can read it, but basically the motion uh requests the, the town council undertake uh basically a second opinion review of the environmental work that was done by the uh firm that the town hired to do the initial review uh and uh with specific attention to the concerns about uh potential remediation costs uh in bringing the site into compliance with the residential standards uh in accordance with DEEP. Uh, and they have basically indicated as well that they would not uh authorize any uh resolutions related to moving the project forward until they had the opportunity to review uh those second results, those second environmental review results. So based on that, uh, I, I did reach out to an environmental uh firm, and I'll just tell you quickly that uh within the last uh year or so, the Brownfields Agency went through a process to hire uh an environmental firm or to work with it while it's doing remediation and evaluation remediation work in the village center. Uh, as part of that project, they received a, a number of proposals from a variety of companies. Uh, they selected one that was the same company that we had them do uh the initial review of eleven Skinner Street. Uh, I went to the second uh one on the list, that is the second most uh desired, if you will, uh on the list, tie and bond, and I spoke with them this afternoon uh about whether they would be available and interested in undertaking a review so that you have that information to uh decide how you wish to proceed. Uh, I did uh get a basic, uh, at least an understanding from them of what we would be asking them to do. And I asked them to provide me general expectations of cost and timing. Uh, they have indicated that they could uh likely undertake a review uh that we discussed uh within about two or three weeks, which was surprising to me quickly uh from the time that we allowed them to go ahead. That involves basically reviewing all of the materials uh that the owner's LEP has put together. They would do some onsite visitation. Uh, they would review recently uh submitted documentation to DEEP and a variety of other tasks uh to duplicate uh the effort made by uh VHB in the original review. They estimate the cost of that to be between seventy-five hundred and ten thousand dollars uh uh to complete that work. So uh, that's the best I can do for you with several hours of, of notice to give you an estimate on what it would cost to uh fulfill the request of the Board of Finance if you chose to move forward.
Considering we only save ninety-five hundred for the full report on the uh
Um, yeah, so if it took them three weeks to get that information back to us, erring on the side of caution, does that give us, does that work with the timeframe for the Board of Finance to then be able to meet, approve it, and for the co- town council to approve it and send it to Reprender before the end of the agreement in September?
I think it would be, if it was achievable, it would be very close. Uh, you know, three weeks puts you into the beginning of September, which certainly means that the, the dates that you've already put out there would be delayed uh before the Board of Finance could review, even if they reviewed it almost immediately. Uh, you're at least a week, if not two weeks back, and so now you're really bumping up against the end of the month.
Jack, is there any reason why the environmental firm that we did hire and did study the project, um, results are suspect?
Um, in my opinion, no. Um, but the Board of Finance felt that uh there was a question related to an underground storage tank that may or may not be on the site that was called out by uh our initial reviewer. Uh, and uh, there was some concern, I, I can only guess that there is concern that the two hundred and fifty thousand that we have put in to move the environmental remediation level from what I'll refer to as commercial level to a residential level um is not sufficient.
So, what more time do you?
Uh, I can only suppose that the Board of Finance feels that the estimate we have provided of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is based on the recommendation of our initial reviewer, the initial of VHB firm uh recommendation. I can only presume that the Board of Finance believes that number is not sufficient or is not uh or uh is, uh, yeah, I'll just say it's not sufficient to cover the work and therefore it's an underestimation uh in the project cost. Based on the conversation they had, that's the only supposition.
What have they based that opinion on?
I, I don't know. Um, I was asked some questions about, uh, about the project. I was asked some questions about the environmental work. Um, I don't know that they're here tonight, but I was asked some questions about the environmental work uh and in particular about the three thousand gallon um uh underground storage tank that was identified as being present but for which there is no closure work, so it suggests that it's still there. Um, and uh, a couple of other questions uh by, by one of the members, and then that same member presented this motion.
Can I just clarify one more thing? So the letter that the Board of Finance was referring to was a letter from BBH that was dated February seventh of this year. And they waited until last night, the night before the town council was supposed to address this to bring up their environmental concerns. I just wanna make sure that that was the correct date in that letter, correct?
And that is about at early February, so February seventh is probably correct.
And they have that though?
I don't know when it was provided to them. It was certainly provided to the council at that time.
I think they probably have seen it more recently than that.
I mean, uh, from my point of view, um, we should have an indication from the Board of Finance that if we get a second and it agrees with the VHB analysis, that they will approve because it would certainly be um a horrible result for us to ask for a second environmental thing and then have them not approve the project.
Is there a meeting next week? I make a pardon. Their meeting's Monday, right?
No, they're gonna cancel it.
Oh, they're gonna cancel it. What's the odds of uh about violating FOI, uh, getting some kind of uh indication from them? uh, indication from them? That if we were to get this information and if what came in at the price or below, that they would put it forward to the taxpayer?
I could individually email them and have them respond to me individually.
I mean, because we don't want to put it, if the uh, uh, testing on, if they're going to approve it um, would, could we make a motion to uh, go forward with this, the second um, opinion, providing that the Board of Finance comes back with the affirmative for Jeff?
But you, you could, sure.
I mean, if they're not meeting this month, that's the only way that we would be able to know what their plans are before spending the month. I would guess if it came back positive, they wouldn't have made the motion if they're not going to send it forward to the taxpayer.
Yeah, well, that's a great assumption without.
Uh, again, that's what I'm saying, but if we have a motion to proceed, so, subject to Jeff getting confirmation from the majority of the members.
But it feels like they've based this opinion on nothing. So they're asking us to spend ten thousand dollars to verify something we've already spent a bunch of money on. Something we're already up against a deadline on just so that they can say what they spent another ten thousand dollars on this project to verify what we've already got. There's nothing that I understand from the Board of Finance that gives them any expertise or special information that says they are questioning the results of the first finding. So I, I can't just buy in my head spending more money on another on another test at this point.
I wonder, um, if it would suffice to have our original engineers come in and speak to them and, uh, be quick.
I think the issue. The issue that we're all facing is there are a goodly number of people in the community who do not want to spend any additional amount with the owner of the property. Keep that option available for us to acquire if we.
Well, hence, hence my recommendation, if we could get prior engineer in.
How, how quickly and can we notice that and still meet requirements of deadlines?
I mean, not knowing their, their schedule, and I would just suggest that they could probably come pretty quickly. Uh, I don't know, however, we don't know whether that's something that the Board of Finance will undertake. And they have not vetted their, the rest of the conversation, really, they've not, uh, they have not taken the opportunity to really discuss the rest of the um, the resolutions that would be put in front of them, the, you know, the bond, the appropriation, the potential sales, so they've really, and they have not had discussion on any of that at this point.
All right, but this was a unit I spoke to, so it's not, you know, the entire board wants more information, so I, I think we need to, um, I, I do think we need to do it, um, if, and if it's subject to, uh, you know, I would say I would be happy to make the motion to have it, uh, move forward, uh, pending the, uh, outcome of majority of the Board of Finance, uh, communicating with Jeff. In the affirmative.
But in addition to that, I think they would have to have a special meeting to approve it to approve the whole thing so that you can meet the time.
What, oh, I'm sure they, I mean, that, that's, they need two days for that, or a day if they don't do, or so, I mean, I don't see, see that as a problem.
No, no, but they have to commit to do that. They, they have to commit not only to that they're gonna go ahead, but that they're gonna go ahead in a timely fashion.
Uh, look, I, if, if the council thinks it wants to do this, uh, the finance director, Jeff Joka, and I will work through communicating with the Board of Finance. Uh, he'll start with the chairman and see what she believes, what she thinks would work, and how that would be handled. I would be more comfortable if, uh, we're asking these types of questions, uh, if they either held their meeting on Monday or called a special uh, and really meant to discuss reconsidering their motion or allowing something different, um, or at least answering the question that if they get satisfactory response is.
We're suggesting that you will propose a special meeting needed. She's online, so she's online.
That's how covered under FOI, under the meeting vehicle, and just zoom.
So she's indicated that they would do, um, a, a special meeting, and that I think is probably the best route to go uh, for them to, like I said, either meet, uh, on Monday or meet later this week, uh, to consider the to answer the questions that we've talked about tonight. A, uh, if the resolution or if the response is, uh, is it confirms the findings of the original review by V, VHB, uh, then they would move forward, uh, or then that would be acceptable and they would move forward, or in the alternative, would they uh, accept a, a meeting with VHB to explain the findings and explain, um, directly what their response was, which would certainly cost less than a new review.
David, is the only environmental issue this, uh, potential buried tank of some sort?
So as I understand it, the environmental issue primarily is the determination on the tank, and then there are some other questions that relate to moving, uh, to housing people on the site. There is a question of, uh, and, and uh, council member, hence is, is, has reviewed this material pretty extensively, uh, as well. There is a question of uh, how we address what is a low-level contamination on the property because of the fill that was used on the property. And a, a, a related question related to groundwater, uh, which is perhaps a, a diminishing problem because of the fact that properties around it could be connected, uh, to the town's water system, and the groundwater becomes less of an issue. Uh, so those are probably the primaries that are at, at odds right now, and we have, as I indicated, allocated two hundred and fifty thousand for addressing those things.
With regard to the tank, do they have to dig to where they suspect it is? Or can they use ground penetrating radar to determine?
That would be the first test, would be GPR, so that there isn't a, a need to dig. Um, but obviously, if there's something there, the anomaly is found, then that would be the intent, would be that it would be removed. That would be something that would likely be the responsibility of the current owner, however. And that would not be something the town would need to.
I guess the question for us is, do we proceed with this? This stage subject to the Board of Finance? Majority of the Board of Finance willing to come ahead with this?
That was my thing, I made that motion.
And what's the cutoff date?
Uh, whatever date, uh, working back to make it, uh, to the thirtieth. And we have to have a cutoff date, I mean, they're gonna have to respond rather quickly, uh, today, Tuesday, so I'm sure that um, most of them should be available, uh, tomorrow via email or phone. Um, and then depending on how soon the environmental company did work, we could work it back to make sure that we have the information and the Board of Finance has a meeting um in time for us to set a town meeting in a, a referendum. I mean, ideally, if we could, I mean, in my mind, ideally, if we could get an extension without cost, um, to put it on the, uh, election day, so we didn't have to pay another referendum cost, that would be even nicer, um, but that's putting it off an additional month. Um, you know, so, uh, I mean, if, if there was any way to make maneuver that, that would give us a little bit of, uh, time if we could convince the owner to, uh, be so generous as to allow us to, uh, the one additional month, put it on the election day. And then just add a referendum question, as we've done in the past. It would, it pretty much mitigate the cost of the, um, of second opinion.
We have a motion before us?
Yeah, so to, uh, move forward pending the, uh, positive response from the Board of Finance in the agreement to hold a special meeting in time to go to, uh, referendum.
I'll second that.
David, you have the, uh, wording you need on that?
I think so, I think what we're talking about is authorizing the second review. Uh, assuming we hear from the Board of Finance of their willingness to, uh, likely move ahead and schedule a, uh, this a special meeting to consider that. You, you talked about, um.
No. No, it was assuming that they say that they will approve the resolution. If the, if it's special, a special meeting and approve the resolution.
I did not say that, but we did talk about that, yes, uh, on that time, portion, too.
I mean, because if they don't approve the resolutions, it's all academic. They're just throwing.
So if, if they have no intent to approve the three resolutions, like, uh, to Jack's point, there's no point in sending them.
Or at least the primary ones, right?
Yeah, primary, yeah.
Okay, hey, we.
Yeah, the actual purchase of the property.
Yeah. Um, and this expenditure.
Yeah.
To make it a, a.
So uh, is, if I will, if I may, as part of your discussion, um, the council doesn't normally have a meeting or does not have a meeting scheduled on the twenty-sixth of August, which would be the, the fourth Tuesday of the month. If you met on that night, if by some grace there was a decision made that that could happen, that would be the latest date at which you could approve and move ahead with the schedule you've already presented. If you were to take an action, Kathy, check my math if you have the opportunity. Uh, if you were to take an action on the ninth of September, which is your next regularly scheduled meeting, you could hold, because there are five Tuesdays in the month of September, you could hold your, um, town meeting on the twenty-third and hold the, uh, referendum on the thirtieth, and I guess likely you, you would technically then meet the existing terms of your extension. Assuming it were.
Well, we don't, we don't have time to get some information, so we don't normally need the network, we can do that.
So you'd have four weeks in the interview, in the interim for whatever review would need to be done and, um, Board of Finance action prior to a council action on that.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Jeff? Um, I fully support the fire department, I fully understand that they need a new situation. Um, this motion comes along with a lot of what-ifs. And I have not had any member of the public, other than people who belong to the fire department, come to me and say that they are going to support this. So I cannot, in good conscience, authorize any more money to go towards this project.
Sure.
Rich?
It is pretty clear, and it has been pretty clear for a number of years that our department needs new facilities. That's, that's a fact, that's, that's, that's pretty clear. There's been a, a ton of time, hours and hours of time spent, dollars spent as well to look at alternatives for a fire station. Going back and forth, we've got initial, uh, cost recommendations, way, way, multi-millions, eighteen millions that we sent back and said, no, it's not responsible, we're not going to do it, we can't support it. We figured out a way to get that down to about eleven million. Ten, eleven million, ten million, I believe, is the, uh.
Ten point.
Ten point two in the resolution. If we're to can this project right now, that's that's a fifteen million dollar cost that we've just placed on the town of East Hampton. How do I figure that? The cost of finding a location and building a new building from scratch and everything that goes into it is over twenty-five million dollars. So think about that. Think about that. It's easy to say, no, we don't need a new fire department, and we don't need to, uh, con- consider any impact on, uh, taxes or anything else. We've looked at this thirteen ways from Sunday to come up with the best alternative for a fire department in this town. This is the most cost-effective way to give us what we need. Very simple. Ten point two does it.
I agree.
Without that, you're looking at over twenty-five million dollars even if we did it soon, to say nothing about the cost inflating over time. So we can vote it down. We can vote it down as a town. But you just saddled yourself with another fifteen million dollars that you didn't have to spend. The Board of Finance can can this project by not letting it go through. I don't, to, to be quite honest, because we're gonna have a referendum, and we're gonna have the townspeople themselves vote on it, that's what we should be doing. Board of Finance, in my view, should not have the responsibility for perhaps throwing on another fifteen million plus cost on the day we go after a new fire department. If the townspeople wants to do it, the pop town, who can do it, that's your right, that's our right, as a town. But those are the people who should be doing it, not the Board of Finance. That's the story, folks.
Well said.
George, I have.
I can't add anything to that.
Uh, just to reiterate, the ten point two does not complete the fire department for full transparency. There will be another in today's dollars, eight million dollars coming down the pipe, ten years or fifteen years down the road, so as much as I am absolutely for this project, and I do want to see it move forward, the reality is, is the town will be saddled with other, other ten million or fifteen million at a later date, and we do need to, you know, in full transparency, that is reality. If we go to a paid service, we do need to finish out outfitting the building, which will have the additional costs associated with it, so the ten point two will work for, right now, for our fire department as a volunteer um department. It will not work if we have to go to a paid service, we will have to invest more money into that. Just.
Require less than twenty-five million dollars in Florida.
Well, in total, it'd be about the same, it would be, you know, down, down the road. But again, I do think this is the ideal spot for the, the, the location for everything, and as town maker said, I've done quite a bit of research on this, and I, I a hundred percent support it, but I just want to be transparent that there will be more to come.
Uh, I'll just make a follow-up comment, there is no other alternative site that has been identified at this point.
Right, just. Hundred percent. One more quick thing here, uh, we've been very fortunate, this town had a very good volunteer fire department. I mean, incredibly fortunate, there's a lot of towns that don't have what we have, and it's amazing that it's, it's, it's kept going this many years. And, uh, if it does dwindle, obviously, that's what this is, we're looking forward to, right? Uh, but again, I applaud everybody who volunteers for this, uh, that's a big deal, and they do a heck of a job in this town.
Move the question. No further discussion. Those in favor of the amendment or the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay?
Nay.
Two nays. Okay. Moving on. Agenda item, agenda item nine, new business.
The sewer extension. I was not ordered.
No, that's under.
Right, that should be 9D.
That's nice.
Okay. 9A, review and possible action on senior center and services task force survey.
So the council has received, as indicated earlier, a proposed survey from the senior center to services and senior center and services task force. Um, it has. Was presented to you earlier in the, or was it going to be presented earlier, ended up being pulled from an agenda and the council members had an opportunity to make some comments and I think some of you did. I think additionally, in the materials that you received today. You received some pretty significant revisions from Councilmember Wormal, who is the chair of that body. You also, of course, heard the comments during the comment period earlier at the beginning of the meeting. I believe also I had thought you had all received from Ms. Mrs. Cosner Parker, her comments or her markup. I, I thought you had received that. I, I may be wrong. But I do believe that at least one copy is here on the table, if not multiples. Councilmember Hens indicates he's got it. So I have a letter that I have been asked to read from the co-chair of that body, if the council will allow, and also, as we indicated earlier, Ms. Makowski would also like to address questions, comments about the survey as well. So if I may. Read this, I will. Thank you. This is from Kim Craft, the, as I said, the, the vice chair of that body. Thank you, members of the town council and town manager Dave Cox for taking time to review and discuss the survey created by the senior center and services task force. I am sorry I cannot attend in person, but I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts. The task force was created in January of this year in response to a white paper on the modernization of our senior center presented by several members of the Towns Commission on Aging. The resolution establishing this task force empowered it to examine, investigate and advise the town council regarding potential options for enhancement of current operations and programming for older adults. In the white paper, we documented the changes that are impacting our town in our state, in our country and throughout or rather that are impacting life in our town, in our state and in our country and throughout the world. According to the U.S. Census, one in 200, in 2030, rather, one in every five Americans will be 65 and older. By 2034, older adults will outnumber children for the first time in U.S. history. We ask, is the town of East Hampton red? Is the place where many older adults seek social connection, health and wellness programs and educational opportunities equipped for the changes that are coming? Our senior centers, under the leadership of our new director Holly Marrero and her talented and committed staff, has seen changes in programs and activities, along with increases in membership each month. The new programs reflect more modern and diverse offerings to engage older adults in the community. Spend one day at the center and you will see a vibrant, engaged, fun and lively place with multiple programs and a variety of activities being offered each day. But look a little deeper and you will see a small staff stretched very thin. An aged building that can no longer support the many programs that older adults are seeking. Limited access to transportation with only one bus. You will see a space that is not ready for the great number of older adults who are and will be seeking a modern, well-appointed, fully staffed center. The survey is critical in gathering data from town residents to examine their experiences and thoughts about moving toward a modern center. In addition, we are hoping to gather information about residents' desires and thoughts about a community center that can support the needs of residents of all ages. We appreciate your support and advice as we move forward and I leave you with one of my favorite quotes. Nothing happens until first a dream. Those are Ms. Ms. Grab's comments. I'll invite Cookie to come up and discuss with you the survey.
Thanks. Thank you. I'd like to just give you a real brief cliff note on our process. We convened in March for the first time and we broke up into three groups, the task force did. And we had our first working group meeting was based on, focused on communication and understanding what the community was dreaming, hoping and wanting and maybe even expecting in the future as older adults in particular, but community members in general age. And so we looked at a bunch of different models. Arlington Heights, which has got a similar population, Arlington Heights, Illinois, but it is part of a larger metro, Chicago metropolitan area. They had recently done a survey, very similar modernization plan. And what they were very generous in offering, they had paid consultants and they allowed us to see their, their survey that they put out to their, the entire community. We took that survey as, instead of having to work from the ground up and create, reinvent the wheel, we took that model and we adapted it initially for our town. We then took the, that survey draft and submitted it to two quantitative researchers. One, a scholar and gerontologist who is renowned in her knowledge of older adults in rural America. And another who is I, a million dollar researcher in a community-based and municipal a data collection and services. So we put that, we asked both of those academics to review the survey and give us our feedback. We took that feedback and incorporated. We also asked Sally to look at the survey and give her feedback. Once we had gathered that information, we ended up, I'm a qualitative researcher, so we we designed focus groups in town, middle head and library here at the town hall, senior center. Um, we did six focus groups and just did a qualitative study on asking the community members what they thought about a senior, senior center, community center, what they hope for. We gathered that information in order to allow us to inform the quantitative survey. Once we took all of that information together. We then wrote a draft. We've submitted it to our task force. We got more feedback. Then, once we got that survey draft finished, we then submitted it to town council and Dave Cox. You all were wonderful in giving us really important data and the, and information critiques. We then reformulated the draft again and and here it is. That's the final, that's the final draft and we hope to submit it. I want to just make one comment about the validity. No research is invaluable. All research comes with a level of error. There's no, no perfect research at all. What you try to do with in collecting data is you try to focus on what it is that you're wanting and what this particular study. It's not as a, it's not designed to give you results. It's an opportunity to gain information and knowledge from our community. So. So anyway, so we're asking you to approve that. We'd like to submit that and field it to the community, all community members who are residents of East Hampton to get their opinions. We've pilot tested it. We've pilot tested the quantitative survey now, this. And so far it takes, on average, in the five or six people that we pilot tested it on on between seven and a half and eight minutes to take. It's at a reading level of 6.27, so that should encompass. You know, every, every reading level. And it, what the feedback that we've received so far is that it's straightforward, comprehensive, consistent and clear. Do you have any questions? Yeah.
Um, so I have Sally's, obviously, then we have the, the red line version and we only have, I believe this could be the final version.
So the red, the red line one is from my edits because the ones that I had sent never got put in.
Okay, so my question is, have you or and or Sally reviewed?
I haven't seen them.
The red line version, did you make?
The stuff that I, so the, the version you have that has the track changes on it is for clarity of language. I split one question into two parts instead of having a com con question and I added a couple of definitions to, to clarify language.
Because it looks like you took some of Sally's comments and you tried to incorporate them in your red line.
Well, some of Sally's comments matched up with some of the edits I wanted to make.
Yeah, I'm wondering, has she looked at your red line?
Not that I know of, she's not on the task.
That's what she did for a living and I know I'd have another response when someone else figured for a living. And some questions as well.
Cookie does this for a living. I'm a sociologist by trading, so we do have bought by people on the task forces. So.
Well, I, I am. Okay, so just the. I'm not a surveyian, okay? And I know why it's on the council levels because you had too many people doing too many different surveys back when I was on council last time. And without a specific purpose, so I'm very hesitant on surveys. And I never, I don't think it hurts to have another set of eyes look at any red line versions before it goes out. That's all. And if Sally hasn't seen it, maybe she should pick up her, okay, there's still here. I'd be happy to give her mine.
My, my. I haven't seen it, so I, I have. I will, I will say that, that just as a side comment, we asked, we did go to Juliette Hattes back in June, I guess it was. Who was chairing the P O C D to ask her whether or not, perhaps because we were, we were conscientious about on a number of surveys going out in town, whether or not taking some of our questions and incorporating it into the the P O C D survey that was gonna go out, I guess, in later this fall. And Juliette actually recommended that we do a separate survey. She, she felt that it was necessary for us to be, to be separate. I will also say that, I mean, I appreciate, you know, community, more community reports and feedback, but. I haven't seen this. I, I haven't looked at it.
It doesn't change any substance from.
It doesn't.
It's just reformatting.
So.
It looks a lot more than.
Um, so anyway, so what we're, what, I'm going to trust Jordan and his, and his track changes on this document. And I would ask that you allow us to field the survey. You have charged us as a task force to provide you with feedback in January. And as a volunteer organization with volunteers doing all of this work. We would appreciate when we're in time to be able to get that done. Jan?
I'd like to make a motion that the survey be approved in whatever form the task force approves in a final review of the two versions we have.
Do we have a second?
Yeah. I mean, I'll second, but I didn't think I should.
So I guess my, my question is, so what are we actually approving if it's, you know?
Are we approving the clean version that got placed on the table today?
Or no, they said the motion was to, uh, read.
Oh, the clean version is the readable version.
That's not what that motion was though.
My actual motion was that there are two versions. And we don't need to micromanage it. We can allow the, this task force, which includes Jordan and others to select which version they want and send that out.
But isn't the whole purpose of that, when the council approves the version, shouldn't we have a clean version that we're approving?
I don't think so. It's, I don't think it's anywhere in our bylaws or.
But that's the whole purpose of it coming to the council.
This copy, no, but right here. It says, senior center services task for survey draft, kind of be sent this thing about our future. We want to hear from you. That's the, that's the version, that's the. Third final.
The one that was in.
Not the one attached to Kim's letter. They're separate from.
Okay, I, I'll put that in this line, motion.
What was that? So his motion, his motion is it's.
All right, good.
Mr. Chair, for discussion.
Discussion.
Um, I appreciate all of the efforts of the task force. If this is the survey that you want to send out, I would just caution the task force and the future council that looks at the survey results. That there is going to be some issue with the way that some of these answers are still worded. I will use number 12 as an example. How would you prefer to receive notices, communications about upcoming events and programs in town? Choose all that apply. Choose all that apply is not a good answer for a survey because you could get all nine of these options with equal weight. You could have 10 people that each say the nine or that's what they choose. So you're, you have no direction to go in from those results to make any decision about how you in the future would market those or how you would get that information out to those residents because you don't know which ones are actually most important. And the same with the tables that say rank it medium, high, high, low or none. Those are going to give you a lot of scattered information. They're not going to give you pinpointed results about what is most important to the residents. So when you get that back to interpret it, you're not going to have any scale of which items are most important and which items are least important.
Which is why we, why we created a rank order. We asked, we asked in, in question 12 to please rank your top three.
So on this copy in front of you, that's not.
That's how we have.
It's still the check off apply. That's why I just want to make sure. I thought you had incorporated those, some of those changes that I had suggested. But this copy in front of me still says choose all that apply. I think the ranking is definitely what is needed for all of the questions. To make sure you're getting usable data back. So I'm not sure if we don't have the right. So the one. It looks like the one. And the one in Kim's packet still has those low, medium, high.
Right.
It don't have ranked top three in order of preference, but there are still the low, medium, high cables that are going to give you some scattered data.
One thing I would say is that this is not. This survey is to guide discussions. It's not supposed to create any new policies or anything. It's the guy, it's to guide the, the task force work going forward. So whatever information we get will help with those discussions. So the more information we have to use. The more clearly we can explore all the different options.
I appreciate that, Jordan, and that's exactly right. The difference between sort of marketing research and business research and, you know, more academic or municipal research is that the former is sort of knows exactly what they're The former is sort of knows exactly what they're. Evaluating or, or searching for. We're trying to generate knowledge. We're trying to understand. We're, we're saying, especially even within the focus groups, we said, what, how do you feel? What is your experience with it? What do you like? What don't you like? We audiotaped all of those, um, focus groups. We transcribed all the data. We culled through it multiple times to develop the themes that informed the research. I mean, the survey. And so I appreciate that. That's exactly it. This, the survey is not a standalone data collection point. It is simply designed to help us understand what the community hopes to see. In town.
So.
Yeah.
Just playing devil's advocate. So if this survey comes back and says we want a brand new senior center with a pool and, and everything with it. That's gonna have zero impact. This survey can have zero impact on what the town goes further. This is just gonna be for your internal discussions and have nothing to do with. Expanding senior services or senior center.
Absolutely. Right. This is all this, all this survey is gonna do is help us inform you all. In our final report with how you want to go forward. We're gonna share with you, the communicate, we're gonna communicate with, with the, uh. With the citizens of East Hampton to ask them, what is it that they're hoping? Cause nobody's asked them yet. You haven't, you, we haven't surveyed the older adult community with this type of specifics. And then what you do with it, how obviously you're not gonna, you know, the potential of. Building a fancy YMCA type community center east, I mean. That may be a pipe dream and it may be possible, you may, we may be able to get a philanthropist who wants to. Donate the money.
So I'm looking for the, the councils to act on it. I, I guess I'm a little confused. He said that you were gonna use this information to give us either to act on. What is your?
No, we're not. We're not giving you information to act on. We're giving, we're gonna come up with our final report between. Our communications, the stakeholders group, and then sort of present needs of the senior center. Those are the three working groups of this task force that you guys created. And we are then going to write, we are charged with writing a final report to you in January. Of all of that information that we've gathered. So we're gonna provide a report.
And I apologize, cause I would, obviously I just stepped in for Deb who was on council, so I guess I'm a little unsure. Uh, so I, I'm still unsure of what this report is supposed to. Get the town council to do. What, what is, what is the overall purpose of the report and what are we, you know?
So there, so the town council has received a white paper back in January. That talked about, um, the need to examine modernization of our senior center in particular. And. Um, you won't, uh, can you guys help me here? You won't.
We created, we created the task force in order to better understand the needs of the senior population and the, and. Younger populations as they age into senior needs. Based on what the white paper said, what the Commission on Aging has determined. And what our current activity, uh, current offerings at the senior center are. And the task force has been meeting in order to figure out. At the end of this, uh, the one year period of the first authorization of the task force. What are we gonna be able to present to the town council? Like here's, here's what we found out. Here's the information that you can use going forward to better serve the residents of the town. But we're not gonna say, here's our presentation for a twenty-five million dollar senior center. Yes or no? It's this, this population in town would benefit from this level of service that we don't currently offer. We're doing this, nobody's using it. Maybe we shift those resources into another area. And that's what this survey is gonna help us determine.
So, uh, and, and just like in question three, you know, what if everyone comes back and says the pool is the most important thing? Uh, you're telling me that there, you're not gonna want the council to put in a pool for the seniors?
We may, we may be able to find. It, maybe it's not feasible. Maybe we can find accommodations somewhere else. That can tie in with the senior center to offer aquatic services. This isn't, we want a pool, we're gonna put a pool in. It's with, do people look for that sort of service from East Hampton?
It's by direction.
Yeah, right. It's a, it's information.
And if, if the data shows and we, and it looks like the entire town wants a pool. Then you as the town council will then determine whether or not you're gonna try to meet that town need. Or you're gonna say, no, we can't afford it and we'll put that on the back just. In the same way that you're doing the fire department or the police department or anything else.
It's largely the same mission that the task, the ambulance task force had, which was to. Evaluate what we have, what we could be doing better and how it's gonna look in the future. Same basic premise.
And I think also look at the task force that was created. It was senior and community services.
Well, and, and so that would make sense being like, when you're talking on aging population for East Hampton. There's nothing here about, uh, senior living. It's only about community service and many of the homes in town. Are two-story houses where, you know, something, you know, if you go to other communities like in Portland where they have, um, grand new terrace for the fifty, fifty and over. Where they have a, a, a house with a, you know, is there something in the need for aging in the town? Without necessarily having to, uh, be forced to maintain a house that they can no longer, um.
Aging place. Well, uh, that's more of the P O C D's room. That is.
That's not the scope of the senior.
That's not the scope of. Well, yeah, the, and the Commission on Aging and the Senior Center, we do lots of activities around. As a matter of fact, we're doing a health and wellness and housing fair in November. Where we're talking about, um, aging in place, um, retrofitting your homes. We'll have workshops. It's gonna be actually right here in this room on November eighth. Um, so there's lots of programming, um. That we try to do. We've had adult enrichment where we had, um, a contractor come in and help older adults. Uh, with, uh, talk about how to re-modify their homes in a way. But, but that survey, that type of information that you're asking for is really gonna come from. The P O C D survey and not this one. This one is about senior center services. Not senior housing.
I, I would agree with that because senior housing has come up a lot in those P O C D discussions. So I think that's something that is going to be on that P O C D survey. And to clarify, I believe the survey that we're actually approving is the one nine A. So then the questions need to be met, matched because some of these questions are, so this was nine A, the one that was in our packet. And like for this one, it says, um, raise your top three in order of progress. Nine A was in our packet, so.
I see that. That, I can fix that. That's fine.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the answers are.
Yeah, I know, that was copy and paste error on my part.
Are your questions answered? We move to a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know that we ever heard a second.
Uh, Jordan.
I just didn't know if I could.
Unless you resign. Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor.
Aye, aye.
Post nay.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate your support.
Thanks for your patience.
Agenda item, new business. Nine B, review and possible action interlocal agreement between Middletown and Town of East Hampton Police Services. I'll, uh, invite, uh, Chief Western to come up and address with you both nine V and nine C is. Uh, various updates for John Rich.
Good evening. Uh, tonight you have before you interlocked agreement between the Middletown Police Department. And basically the East Hampton Police Department. There's been a little confusion, some comments I've heard tonight. This is not for police services per se to come into our town. This is just for the Middletown Police Department. For us to have the ability to house our prisoners when we cannot fill our, what we commonly refer to as prisoner overnight shifts. As the town council knows, we have five openings, one person in the academy, one person currently deployed. So we're down seven people and we're struggling to fill our vacancies. One of the things that hurts is when we have to hold a prisoner overnight because the prisoner cannot make bond or for whatever reason. If we have a prisoner, we have to bring someone into the station and they physically have to be in the station to monitor the prisoner. It's difficult to do that when we're down so many officers, which requires us, we're already ordering officers in to fill vacant shifts. And now on top of that, we would have to fill, order in someone to fill a prisoner shift. The Town of East Hampton, the East Hampton Police Department has previously had an agreement with the Middletown Police Department to house our prisoners. It was in effect when I originally got here in two thousand eighteen. When we, there was a, a lot of reasons why they were housing our prisoners. One was our facility. Uh, it was not secure enough to house a prisoner. Two, it didn't have the adequate security features built in with this new building, new police department we're in. All those. Situations went away, so we immediately started housing our own prisoners. In the recent situation we're in now, I reached out to the chief of the Middletown Police Department. Um, and he basically, um, had his staff draft this interlocal agreement specifically between the two towns. For the prisoners only. That's the only thing it is. They're not coming here to do our patrol. We're just taking our prisoners there. The only cost that they're going to charge us is the cost it costs for them to feed them. They will house them, they will feed them. We just have to get them there. And get them from Middletown PD to the court, which is basically the exact, almost the exact same agreement we had with them previously pre-two thousand eighteen. So I'm asking that this agreement be approved so the town manager and I can. Sign the agreement and get it over to their governing body, which I, I believe is the town council over there. City, city council, for the city council to approve it. The quicker we get this done, the quicker we can alleviate some of the order ends that we're currently encompassing.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? I think it makes sense because we can't put our citizens in jeopardy. Having tying up one or more officers going babysitting. There's no other discussion?
I just have a quick question. Um, gee, when you, when you transport somebody to Middletown, do you have to have two officers?
No.
Okay, good.
No, um, the only time when it was, used to be iffy if it was a female prisoner. But now we have the in-car cameras. They just turn the in-car camera on in the back and away you go. Yeah, so no, only one person. But barring any unusual.
There is no further discussion. Those in favor. Adoption of the interlocal agreement between Middletown and East Hampton. Aye.
Aye.
Post nay.
Thank you. Tonight, uh, before you, uh, we have several general, general, seven in total. Um, that I'm submitting for your approval. We recently, between July twenty-first and August first, we had assessors, um, review. Uh, roughly two hundred and one standards for tier two and tier three accreditation. Uh, the assessors noted seven minor. Uh, issues with our current general orders that required some very minor corrections. Some included one word, some included a paragraph. Uh, and in one case, we had to create, uh, a brand new existing or a brand new general order. Um, so the first G O, general order is five point nine, which is traffic enforcement. Um, the change required minor language to outline the procedures to be followed. If a driver is found unfit to operate a motor vehicle. We currently had not memorialized it to writing, but if we find someone is, is not fit to drive, we can seize their license. And we can send that license to the Department of Motor Vehicles and they order a retest. Uh, general order five point two nine alarms is a new general order. Um, it was required to be in compliance again with accreditation standards. The general outlines procedures for which we respond to alarms, whether it be a residential alarm or a business alarm. We currently already had in place how we respond to bank alarms, but this is specific to alarms other than bank alarms. And again, this was the only one that was brand new. General order six point four is an existing general order. Um, the change outlines procedures to be followed and documented and photographing certain evidence. The assessor sometimes can take a different view of what is required and what is not. But unfortunately, when the assessors say you need to put this in to be able to pass. Sometimes we have to do what they want us to do. So that was some minor changes. Um, how they viewed it to be worded. Six point two is narcotics investigations. And the change basically states that training is required prior to the use of any surveillance or undercover equipment. Our previous general order didn't say anything about, uh, officers being trained with that equipment prior to its use. Again, a very minor change. Eight point two, the selection process, again, is a, an existing general order. This change required specifics, uh, specifies that during the recruitment process. The department will maintain contact with the applicant. We currently were doing that. We just not, had not memorialized that in writing. Uh, eight point four, performance evaluations, again, is an existing general order. It required wording that states the chief of police or his designee shall meet with an employee who is contesting their evaluation. Um, that's a long running standard. Um, that an employee who did not agree with her, his or her evaluation, they could come in and speak with me. Again, we just had to memorialize it in writing. And the records administration, uh, general orders, an existing general order, we had to change some wording. Uh, that certain records are secured under lock and key. And it's, it depends on where it's secured. On how, who's gonna control the locks and keys. If it's personnel matters, then it's the obviously Human Resources Department. Um, she or the town manager would control the key. If it's Internal Affairs, they would be locked up in my office and I would can control the keys. If a juvenile record in the court, um, the individuals that, uh, do our records management system to control the key. So we just had to outline that certain records under certain situations are secured under lock and key, separate from the rest of the records. So it is a bunch of general orders, but actually minor modifications. I'm very happy. Two hundred plus general orders and they only found seven things. I'll take it. I'll take it. Um, and just so you know, September eleventh. The report that the assessors will do will go to the Police Officer Standards and Training Council, um, for their vote. To, uh, hopefully, um, give us tier two and tier three accreditation. Which will be the first time in the history of the East Hampton Police Department we have ever been accredited. Um, and I owe this work to Lieutenant Hardy Bergen. It's, it's all him. He's done this. He's been working on this for. Over eighteen months, almost twenty-four months now. So. We're at the conclusion. However, the next stage is, once we get all the orders approved. Then we need to start putting proofs into the files that we're in compliance. then we need to start putting proofs into the files that we're in compliance. So it's a never ending cycle. So I'm winded to say these are the general orders that I'm seeking for approval.
Second.
Can I just ask one quick question? I appreciate you clarifying who holds those keys. Is it not necessary to list those in the general order?
So what we've done is with some of the general orders, we have not purposely made it vague, but if something changes, that means you gotta look back and do the general orders. We have one general order, housing of prisoners, that affects like twenty plus standards. So anytime you change a general order and you gotta update power DMS is where we put these in there. If the change is not very, very small, like one word, that means someone has to go back into those twenty plus standards and change them. So in this case, if something changes, we don't want to have to go back and do it. Change exactly who has the keys. You know, the human resources is the prime example. If something was to change in that office and now the personnel records became, kept somewhere else, we would have to go back and change all these general orders, so. But good.
There are no opposition. We'll take all seven items. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of adopting the general order modifications and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's nay. So adopted.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item ten.
Ninety.
Oh, ninety. How could I forget? Sure, extension. Would someone like, well, I weighed it off. I'll just let the community and the council know that I am not really a great extension of the small plan as proposed. It's time.
I couldn't agree more. I think it's absolutely ridiculous what they're doing. While we're in there, I was actually on the G I S and if you look at this, even the forty thousand dollars at the current, before the reevaluation numbers, it is over ten percent of most of those properties listed, their house value on our current assessment. That's without their digging up their yards and everything else. And that is absolute, I, I could never support that in any way, shape or form. And I, that's why I asked it the last time, what power the town council has over the, the W P C A because this is, this is just, should just stop.
Mr. Jeff, wanna make a motion? What should, I move that the East Hampton Town Council directs the town manager to send a message to W P C that it is not in favor of a sewer expansion as described on June fifth.
Second.
Third.
I don't think we need any more.
I would just point one fact out. Back in nineteen eighty-two, the original sewer system we put in that the equivalent of that forty thousand dollars was eighteen hundred dollars. And we hit. So I'm not sure where the escalation comes in the course of this. I know the original water pollution control authority committee excluded, I'm gonna call that northwestern high of Route sixty-six and west of Champion Hill. Because properties were too far apart from one another and the cost was too costly or just a few houses that were covered at the time. And it was an economic issue certainly then not to do that, not to pursue it. So is there any other?
Mainly other question, I guess it would be good to, but Dave, what's looking like we have a a motion in six seconds to the, to the direction here. We pass it. What binding effect at all? Is there, I say at all, because I, I just try to get a handle on that. Is there therefore on W P C A and the project?
So contrary to what the resident suggested to you earlier, the town of East Hampton has neither a city nor a borough within it. So there, that is a moot point. However, I would say that it is in, in this particular instance, an important statement by the town council. By the way, as I, you've asked me the direct question, you do not have direct authority over most operations of the W P C A because if you have, that is, this town has assigned oversight of that particular section of the state statutes to the W P C A, much like the Planning and Zoning Commissioner. In this particular instance, your statement carries significant weight because it is likely that if this project were to proceed, it would need your approval to issue bonds. It clearly states to them that you will not approve the issuance of bonds to fund this activity. So this is why I think it's an important statement. Your statements have been important to them in the past as well. They're not fools. They recognize that you appoint their body. They also recognize the same things that you do. That they have a constituency that they have to pay attention to and respond to. And I will stand here and encourage everyone in this room to say to the W P C A tomorrow night, the same things you said to us this evening, because that is the purpose of the conversation tomorrow night. Is to hear those questions, hear those concerns, make those statements. I think the resolution will be the same at the end of that evening. Maybe at the beginning of that evening. I don't know. They'll be the same kind of resolution, I suspect. I don't, I can't predict, but I suspect that that will be the case. Especially when they hear from the town council that your support is not there and therefore the pieces that they might need from you and perhaps really ultimately from the voters is not there either. So.
Good, okay, thank you.
I think it's a good statement to make.
Thank you.
I just want to give you a quick thing. I did this quick math. It would be about sixty-five hundred dollars in today's dollars. It would be eighteen and change. It wasn't eighty, eighty-two.
I, I wasn't gonna bring it up, but let's, let us not forget that one of those construction projects was ninety percent funded by the federal government. And one of those projects was seventy-five percent constructed, or rather funded by the federal government. So we weren't paying those costs. Those possibilities are not in place today. And construction inflation is different than regular inflation, especially in the last five years. That having been said, I think there is consensus, the number is too high. The statement is an appropriate one to make.
Well, you know, and, and it's too high from the standpoint of a reasonable person. You know, a reasonable person having that added to itself. You know, I mean, the fact whether it inflates at whatever level and gets wherever it gets, if that number ends up being a number that a person can't afford, it's all that inflation is irrelevant.
Numbers aside.
You can't afford.
There's no appetite for this. People don't want, numbers aside, they don't want it.
That'll help you have to register your stuff, picking the number of times you pump it and it's on file every time they come to your house. So I mean, they, they want our records of noncompliance, it's like a kind of.
Call a question. I guess we're gonna call the question. You all finished. Those in favor of the motion, please signify. I say aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Agenda item ten, town manager's report.
So Commissioner Member Wanat mentioned one item I was going to remind you of. And Chief Wester mentioned the other item I was gonna mention to you, so I'll just remind everybody that my written report, which was not filed until today, is online and part of this packet for the meeting tonight and on the town manager's page. If there are questions, I will certainly answer them.
Are there any questions to the town manager? Thank you, David. Very good, concise. Agenda item eleven, appointments.
Yes, sir. Mister Chairman, we have a couple of appointments to make to add to a few of our boards. I'll start by nominating David Savarowski to the, to an alternate position, the only open alternate physician on the Conservation and Lake Commission with a term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Very important, not.
What David Savarowski to be is the I, I got that, Conservation Lake Commission is alternate.
June thirty, twenty-six would be the term ending date.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor, appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's nay.
The second appointment we have tonight is for Gene Sunstrom to join the Commission on Aging as, again, filling the last alternate position. And yeah, let me see if I can give a yes, that would be a that, that would be through the end of this year. Twelve thirty-one, twenty-five.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the nominee? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's nay.
And lastly, let's be in one, make this one motion altogether. These folks are, are, have been currently serving up through June thirty, when their term expired, they've indicated a, a desire to be reappointed. They've done great work. And my nomination would be for these people, to these commissions. Ryan Waltisario to Brownfields. Kay Wilson to Brownfields. Sally Cosford Parker to Design Review Board. Len Curtain to Design Review Board and Mark Farmasey to W P C A.
Any discussion on the nominations that posed? Not. Those in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Agenda item, well, tax refunds.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to return eleven refunds totaling one thousand seventy-seven dollars and twenty-six cents to the refunders.
Motion made and seconded to refund tax over payments or refunds. There is no discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Agenda item thirteen, public remarks. Is there anyone else who would make public remarks at this time?
I want to say thank you for all of you. That's just having you behind us. It just makes me feel good, you know, that's great. And I just did want to add one quick thing. So Mister Cox said that we would have our chance to speak tomorrow at the town, at the meeting. It's funny because the agenda has nothing listed as public comments. It's just a presentation. So if he is gonna speak with Mister Bissimo, just let him know that he should allow us to speak and to ask questions.
That, that is their.
Thank you.
In addition to this.
Hi, I'm Becky Abbott and I live on Bear Swamp Road. Yeah, I finally saw a bear. I came here tonight because I see that when they're asking you to authorize a resolution for all this money at eleven Skinner Street and improvements and authorizing issues and bonds. I thought there was going, I was going to hear more discussions about as we're going on about the survey. There's a lot of discussions on that survey. But I, I want to know, who is the seller? I want to know why this seller is including two town properties to be allocated to this person. And why is that having to be included? Why would someone who's just selling commercial property want to be given more of our town land? Which then we will have no authority over what this seller does with it.
First of all, it's, we're not giving it to him. He, he purchasing.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Well, purchasing it. So that seller is going to give you the thirty, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Whatever.
Well, that's not determined yet either. We haven't decided whether we're willing to sell it to him yet.
Yeah, that, that, that's what surprises me. If this right here, what, what we're being asked to do, I can imagine what our mill rate's gonna go up to once this starts and that, how long we're going to be paying for this. I read it that. I mean, twenty forty-seven. I, 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 this is a phenomenal issue for this town. And I, I feel like what were the other places that we spent so much money on? According to what I've been told tonight, investigating these sites and for whatever reason, they were not, not good. But yet, we, we've already, we, we want to acquire this land from a seller who we don't know. We don't know why he's selling nine of them. And we don't have confirmed EPA, we have no idea what's in that ground. Because I've lived here since nineteen eighty-eight and that building has not changed very much, except I think they made offices in the front. So I, I don't know. I didn't see any ground being dug up and dirt removed and I didn't see any of that happening at this site. Yet now we are being told, okay, Tyler wants to reject this site. Okay, you're in for a loss of twenty-five hundred dollars. How would that happen?
We're, we're not gonna get into a debate tonight. We, we don't do that in public comments.
Well, okay, so I, I can't ask questions. I won't, but I'm just telling you.
We will end up discussing it in town for the council. But a lot of those questions have been discussed.
Yeah, and I really like to know when they were and how they were answered because I, I don't feel that the town is getting the full accurate information on this seller. Okay, the other thing I just want to say
Bring three of those.
Is I am very surprised at the lack of communication to the different boards and the town manager. I mean, you were asked to do this, but you don't even know what the Board of Finance is doing with it? I'm just saying, I'm not asking.
I think you're mistaken, ma'am.
Didn't I just hear that? You didn't know what the Board of Finance had acquisition for? The money for another. Test results and was that going to be impacting? And the town manager said something or other was discussed, but it's never finalized. And they're not meeting until the end of August. I guess I misheard that. I apologize. Thank you for your time. I'm surprised.
Any further?
Thinking of one other line.
Hi, I spoke earlier, Matt, was oh, two, two, six, West High Street. Um, so I wanted to talk a little bit about affordable housing. I was constantly coming up, especially with all the sale of all the property. In the center of town, people potentially want brownfield in terms of affordable housing. The reason why I say affordable quotes is because that's a legal definition. It's not the Webster definition. The Webster definition is it's actually affordable. The legal definition is, is, it's not affordable. None of that is affordable. If you think it's gonna be affordable for the poor, for the people, it's not. It is never, ever, ever, ever been affordable. And another thing, every one of those condominiums that has been built. The, or even all those big giant McMansions up on, on, uh, Starview Lane or whatever, every single one of them, it was under the promise of this will bring in a lot of revenue that might lower mill rates. Not a single, single, single time has any of those developments ever. Ever lowered mill rates. And you can say all you want with your education about how, but when you're on paper, you put in a bunch of people into a sardine can, they pay more. Yes. On paper. However, in real life, what happens is, is those people raise their rent, which then raises everything else in town. And because they can get more money out of everyone. This just causes turmoil and problems and destroys all of our forests, our forests, our wetlands. Wayne Rand, when he built that over there on the lake, lakeside property over there, he took wetlands from us. Those are not. Just his. Those are not just developers from Connecticut. Those are not just developers from wherever. They are ours. We pay taxes on them. And I'll tell you this, I pay more taxes than my landlady because I am paying her taxes as well as mine. And I'm, I'm sick of it. And this is, this has gone on too long and these, we need to get people that stand up against these people because they don't care about us. And I mean, I, I'm, I'm against. The, the, the firehouse. I think we can just add on to the old firehouses. I think there's absolute possibility of, of doing integration into things in a lot better, more responsible way. I don't think it would be twenty-five million if you're just adding on to it. I think that what they were saying about how this firehouse turned into a twenty-five million dollar project. I mean, I, it might even be more than that, the way prices are rising with, with certain things. Um, so yeah, I, I hope you really consider that, that none of these affordable housing are actually doing any benefit for the town. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else present?
Uh, Robert Rainville, uh, one thirty Tarcharone, East Hampton. Uh, also the fire chief. Um. It's a crazy ask for us to come for ten million dollars for a lot of people. Um, it's a crazy ask to, um. Have us try to make things better, I guess. So, uh. It's kind of disheartening hearing the things coming out in the public. We try to support everyone. Uh, we're there twenty-four hours a day for anyone in this room. So, uh, it's really hard that. Um, people are saying such harsh things. Um, about this purchase. We, we want a better life for ourselves, for our families, uh, and for all of you. Uh, we currently can't host you in Firehouse because we don't have areas for that. We don't have training. Um, because the areas are so small. Um, building on the piece of property is point six nine acres. Smaller than most houses in town. So it's just not feasible to do that. Um. Some numbers I got today. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, but it's just a. Not a good public disclosure, but. Uh, some of the numbers I got today. Hundred and twenty-one thousand or not hundred twenty-one thousand, hundred twenty-one dollars or a house that's two hundred thousand dollars. So the median house in town is about four hundred thousand dollars per Google. So it would cost two hundred and forty-two dollars a year in your taxes to buy this building. That's not a lot to ask. For a fire department that gives you their services for free. So we give out. Uh, every day, every night, we go to these calls. Um. We put our lives at risk. We go out to the public. And we don't really ask for much. We just want to save a place to house ourselves, a safe place not to get cancer. Um, a place that we can call home. We currently have a place that's just not right. Um, it's falling apart. There's mold, there's asbestos. Uh, there is chloroform in the water. Um, so these are all bad things that you guys would probably fix, right? You would want them fixed. So this is our way of fixing it. And the town needs to, needs to step up for the fire department. Um, we probably save. Around two to three million dollars annually, um, on just taxes. So this one project that's ten million dollars. Well, if you keep a fire department happy, you keep them in a good place, you'll get more people. You'll get more morale. You'll be able to protect the town longer with the volunteers. We want to go for as long as we can. We're not saying we're quitting. We will be here for this town until we're not. Um, our members have a lot of tenure. Uh, Mari Swan in attendance has fifty years with the fire department. Um, I have about fifteen, so. Most of our members stay and they stay for a long time. And a lot of people in town just don't join because they don't have time. So, um, we know it's hard, but we want to step up. And we hope that you guys can step up for us. So, uh, do the right thing. It's two hundred and forty-two dollars a year on average for, for our own selves. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Again, Tom Segwin, forty-seven Cone Road. I, I applaud the fire chief. Um, I support the. The fire, the new firehouse. My concern again is the cost of the remediation of the, uh, of the pollution, uh. The town manager mentioned the groundwater. If there's a groundwater problem, it, it can't be ignored. It's, it, it needs to be resolved before that property changes hands. So if it's found that there, there is EPA or pollution in that site, it needs to be cleaned up at the cost of the owner. Not the citizens of this town. Thank you very much.
I think we're. Unless there's no one else in the audience, we have one person on. Hand raised. Two people. Go ahead with him.
iPhone?
Hi, this is Rebecca Harvey again, thirty-nine Flanders. After listening and I'd like to thank. The council for their stance on the sewer project tonight. And I have had a little bit of a change of with where the fire department is. However, I guess my major questions would be is how many? Kids have we gotten in for general contractors on this and are we going with the lowest possible? Another question that I would have is. Wouldn't it be a little bit easier on the taxpayers and where our mill rate is now? Be the town manager and Board of Finance work together and told us where we could actually save money in other aspects where it might be getting wasted. Propose that and show that this overall project could really. Happen without raising the mill rate another two hundred and twenty dollars per resident here. I think there's a lot of different things that can be done to accommodate our volunteer fire department and saving money in other areas. And think that if that was presented a little bit better to the public, more people would get on board with it. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Next, um. Rick Wannett.
Good evening. Rick Wannett, thirty-five Long Crossing Road. This is a town council meeting, not a finance meeting. It is disheartening to see a counselor holding special session with a secondary board not in talks with all of the council. On the books or record. I feel that this should not take place. And their board meeting was in the past. This meeting is now. How can we be sure that this board? That the Board of Finance is truly saying these things? The Board of Finance is not in this meeting and I think that is a poor way to run business. Taking one member's text messages as truths. I'd like to see. The counselor's phone records foiled under Connecticut FOIA laws be put onto file with tonight's meeting minutes. Thank you very much for your time. Good night.
That it? Moving on. Communications, correspondence and announcements. Have the summary of the various boards and commissions in the packet. Agenda item fifteen, adjourned.
Motion.
Motion made and seconded with the favor, signify by saying aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all for attending.